So we have four members, correct?
I think so.
Gillian, I'm gonna give you co-host rule so that you can...
Sounds good, Ally.
Ally?
Yeah.
We gotta look at this. I got the year plans and everything. On 2388, the block and the lot number is the same. I never saw that.
Yeah, it happens sometimes. It's uncommon.
Okay.
Um, we are live. Okay, we are live, everyone, just so you know. Um, I have a call-in user who phone number ends in seven six. Can you identify yourself just so I can label you? Do I have a call-in user on the phone besides Mr. Garfield?
Yeah, Ally, you fixed it. It's coming up as Dave Garfield now.
Yes, I, I got it. But there's another one I was gonna label, but they're not answering. I'm not sure who that is.
Okay.
Trump.
Give him one more bit.
It's a, it's a tweet.
Was that Adam Pfeffer?
No. Oh, whoever was hung up.
Okay.
I'm here, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I acknowledged you already a few minutes ago. Maybe you weren't listening.
Thank you, Ally signing in, signing in.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm here. Hi, Ally.
Hi, Ally.
Oh, boy. Okay. Mr. Jackson, are you there? Are you muted?
Not anymore, I'm not.
Okay, just confirming, Ally, we have five people, right? Me, Bruce, Dave, Ellie Renner, and Justin, right? Okay, so let's rise and, I'm concluding total, let's rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which we stand, one nation, under God, with liberty, for. Okay, Ally, can you please read in the certification of compliance?
Yes. The time, date, and location of this meeting was published in the Asbury Park Press, Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board in the office of the county with at least forty-eight persons advanced with the right to attend this meeting, and reasonable comprehensive minutes of this meeting will be of support for public inspection. This meeting meets the criteria of the open public.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield. Mr. Stern.
Here.
Mr. Stinkle.
Here.
Mr. Flansbaugh. Didn't hear you, Mr. Flansbaugh, I'm still there. He may be having connective, Mr. Herzl.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Renner.
Mr. Renner.
Here.
Mr. Isaacson, Mr. Meyer, Mr. Ratzek, Mr. Ackerman, Mr. Fuentes. Thank you.
Ally, how come?
Justin would make six. Justin may have just been having connective issues. Justin, let us know when you're back.
Why, there was an echo sometimes repeating.
I think, um, I think it was Ellie, but he's been good about remuting himself. He just unmute, say that he was here.
Hi, everybody. I think I lost you for a second. I'm, I'm back.
Thanks.
Okay, so let the record reflect that Mr. Flansbaugh was here. And swearing of professionals?
Mr. Folk, please raise your right hand. Do you swear a firm testimony before the court? It'll be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. On to resolutions.
Um, just before we proceed, I wanna, um, label Mr. Stables' call-in for the truth. Mr. Stables, does your phone number end in zero, one, or six, one?
I'm actually gonna connect with, um... Hello?
Yes.
I'm gonna reset it now again.
Okay.
I'm gonna call myself in again. I wanna use a different line.
Okay, no problem. Thank you. Um, under resolutions, we have two. The first is an extension of a minor subdivision for SB 2233. I forgot to mark down who was here at the last meeting, which would be... Uh, Mr. Garfield. Gillian, you wanna mute that one?
Yeah, let me see if, uh...
Lighting up blue.
Lighting up blue.
It's very nice music. I wanna keep going in the background.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Gillian.
Resolution for extension, um, present at the last meeting, Mr. Garfield, Mr. Stern, Mr. Stables, Mr. Flansbaugh, Mr. Herzl, and that's it.
Okay, I would ask for a motion. Moved. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay.
The same people for the second one, 2452 minor subdivision.
Okay, do we have a motion? So moved, we have a second?
Second.
Second.
Second, all in. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, somebody has to be muted.
He, he got it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, on to public hearing.
Yes, public hearing. The first one is SB 2388 made by congregation O.L. Elimelach.
Ellie, Ellie Melach.
Elimelach.
Okay.
Mine is a major site plan for a synagogue and a house on Linden.
Okay, so Terry, would you like to go through the report?
Yes, Chairman. Uh, I'm reading from our October 5 review, and I'm starting on the top of page three under submission waivers. Uh, the following waivers have been identified. Traffic study, proof of submission to county planning board. Over within two hundred feet thereof, uh, confluence within two hundred feet, mad maze within two hundred feet, plans and profiles in the I.S. We recommend the waivers, uh, for reasons indicated in the letter.
Okay.
For hearing purposes.
All of them, right?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendations? I'm moving. Justin moves. We have a second.
Second.
Dave, second. All in favor to grant the motions? Aye.
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 Okay. Terry, please continue.
All right, I'm, I'm gonna continue on page four of my letter. Uh, section two zoning. Um, our first comment, we're gonna get testimony shortly, uh, relative to, uh, the, the proposed rabbi's residence, uh, and whether it conforms with zoning. Um, bulk variances include side yard setback as well as aggregate side yard setback. Perimeter buffer relief is required, although we note that, um, they do have some perimeter, buffer shown or proposed. And then finally, uh, the applicant law test by, uh, relative to variances. There's an existing design waiver with respect to, uh, the roadway dedication, shown on the track that'll have to be reaffirmed. And then finally, um, design waivers required from providing shade trees inland in Avenue. If feasible, we recommend that parking be pulled out of the easement such that, um, s- s- street trees can be put in. Uh, I'm sure we'll hear testimony on that shortly. That's our comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Who's on here on behalf of the applicant?
I'm here for this one. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, uh, Mr. Chairman, board members. Miriam Weinstein on behalf of the applicant, congregation O.L. Elimelach. Um, we are here this evening for preliminary and final site plan approval to construct a new two-story shul with a basement and then a separate residence, as, um, was pointed out, to serve as the rabbi's residence. This property was previously subdivided into three lots. Um, and as Mr. Garfield pointed out, it is interesting that the block and lot do have the same number. But it was previously subdivided into three lots, one upon which would be a zero-lot line duplex, and then one for a single-family lot. Um, you'll note that tonight, both, tonight's applications both appear to be for shuls. And probably you'll ask, why do we need another shul? In this case, the rabbi, Rabbi Ginsberg, is a well-known rabbi in Brooklyn. He came for Shabbos to visit his son about a year and a half ago and realized that this area of town really had no place to pray. The neighbors literally begged him to open a shul in the area. While he had no intention of relocating to Lakewood at the time, he saw a void. So they started praying in the house someplace, and today, there's literally standing room only. Um, this has been a collaborative project between the rabbi and the neighbors, and actually, all of the neighbors really wanted to attend this meeting. Um, I kinda told them that that's not such a great idea. I think that they actually emailed in their support to Ally. Um, if this would have been a public hearing, we would have a packed room full of supporters. I'm sure Ally can attest to the letters that she's received. With that said, actually, I'm gonna ask to call upon, uh, Mr. Flannery to be sworn.
Mr. Flan, Mr. Flannery, please raise your right hand. I see you have that testimony before there's more of me, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Brian Flannery, Jackson, New Jersey, licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Uh, as Miriam indicated, this is a, uh, site plan for a, uh, build a shul on the subject property. Uh, it, it's a, uh, a, a, in the neighborhood where, uh, as Miriam has indicated, a, an additional shul is needed. Uh, looking at Terry's report, the first comment with respect to zoning is that the shul and, and rabbi's residence is a private use. Uh, we've submitted, uh, architectural plans for both the shul and the rabbi's residence, and it's a small, uh, residential structure, uh, parish house to, uh, to provide a residence for the rabbi. So it, it is a conforming use. Uh, item two in the report indicates that we have a three-foot retaining wall, uh, by the, uh, concrete patio. Uh, and, and it's the RVE opinion that a variance is needed for that. My opinion will be different, but out of an abundance of caution, I will provide the testimony, uh, to provide, uh, the, the, uh, variance relief for that. Uh, it, it's a, a patio, not a, a deck, so patios don't need to meet the setback. Uh, as you can see on the plan, there's a walk that goes around. It provides access. Uh, it, it's gonna function like a patio, not a deck. And, um, uh, I, I'll provide the information on why the board should grant that variance, uh, even though I, I don't think technically a variance is required. The same refers to the combined side yard setback, uh, because if we say one of the sides, because of retaining wall, uh, it needs a variance, the combined side yard setback also needs a variance. And, and I will provide, um, that as well. Uh, item four is with respect to the twenty-foot buffer. Uh, and that this shul, similar to many others, are providing a fencing and landscaping to meet the intent of that, uh, the buffer requirement. But we do need that relief. Uh, with respect to the relief, uh, uh, master plan of 2017, on page seven, under the vision statement, it says encourage growth and development in appropriate locations and consistent with established land uses. This is a residential neighborhood. There are other, uh, shuls in, in the neighborhood, but, uh, there is a capacity issue. So this is, uh, particularly well-suited, the property. If you look at the plan submitted and, and the exhibit submitted, it's next to the Board of Education property. Uh, it's on Linden Avenue, uh, which is a, a thoroughfare which takes people to the, uh, to the, uh, to Lakewood High School and Middle School. The, the architectural plans have been submitted. It's a beautiful shul that'll, that'll fit nicely in the neighborhood. And, and obviously Lakewood encourages, uh, shuls to accommodate the needs of the people. The municipal land use law, NJAC 40, call and 55D2, under the purpose of the act, is a encouragement of action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in a state in a manner which will promote public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And this promotes the general welfare of the neighborhood. Uh, the variances that are listed are C2 variances. Need to show it relates to a specific piece of property. The geometry of, of this property, uh, it is not rectangular. The, the property is next to a Board of Education property. Uh, so as, as far as an impact on a neighborhood, there's already a school there. Uh, the purpose of the municipal land use law would be advanced, which is what I read, and the variance can be granted without substantial detriment. My opinion, it, it, they can be granted with no detriment on the public good. The variances will not impair the intent and purpose of the zone and zoning ordinance be, because, uh, it, it's a, a technical type variance. Uh, and the, the benefits, uh, outweigh the detriments, and, and my opinion, there are no detriments. So the board can grant these variances, um, in accordance with municipal land use law. Continuing in the report, um, uh, it, there was a comment with respect to the rabbi's residence. We have provided, um, uh, plans for it. Uh, it's a five-bedroom residence with an unfinished basement. Uh, the, the plan is indicated in the report. Uh, had three parking spaces along the front. We're gonna reorient them as part of resolution compliance. They add a stacked fourth parking places. So we'll have four parking places for the, uh, residence, uh, which certainly would accommodate the, the five-bedroom residence, e- even if at some point in the future, a couple, uh, bedrooms are constructed in the basement. Uh, the rabbi has no intent in doing that at this point, but the board always asks, well, what about in the future? Even in the future, if that happens, four parking spaces is typical. And we're providing twenty-one parking spaces for the shul, uh, where only twenty are required. The, uh, item three in the report indicates adding some drainage in Linden Avenue, and, and we would agree to work that out with the board engineer as part of resolution compliance. Uh, item four is with respect to parking spaces in the shade tree and utility easement. Uh, and, and it's my opinion that parking spaces, as well as access drives and, and certain other things, are not restricted from the, uh, the shade tree and utility easement. We, we have room to add a couple of shade trees, which is all you need on a, on a property of this frontage. Uh, and it's my opinion that leaving the parking spaces in, having, uh, one additional space rather than one space short of the ordinance requirement, uh, is a benefit.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Part of the board, but we, we, uh...
Yeah, Brian, just one second.
Terry. In reference to the comment about the shade trees, uh, does the applicant agree to provide the shade trees where feasible during compliance?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Brian, what, what are you doing with garbage?
There's a trash receptacle area, and, and the cans would be rolled out to the street.
How many people? I've seen some of these shuls in the area, and they had fifteen, eighteen garbage cans out, where they really should have a, uh, maybe one or two, uh, recall them. I can't think.
Brian, is it possible to put a dumpster over here?
Yeah, thank you.
We, we could put a, a dumpster in. I, I think, uh, the, the aesthetics of the dumpster, uh, would, would not be the best. Uh, and, and, uh, I, I think that in order to do it, we would probably lose a parking space. So then we're gonna be at the number of parking spaces for the ordinance. But if the board would prefer it, no.
No, my other question is, uh, you know, they're gonna have a party or something over there, and you're gonna, you're gonna have thirty cans outside, like, like Dave was saying.
As, as Miriam indicated in, at the outset, this isn't a, uh, intended, uh, to have a lot of usage. This is intended to provide a need in the neighborhood, and, and the, the usage accordingly can be handled by, uh, roll-out cans. Uh, obviously, if the board feels differently that a dumpster can accommodate, we feel the parking would be better and the, and the roll-out cans would work, as they do for many small shuls.
Yeah, my que, my question is, if we're gonna lose any parking, if you roll out a whole bunch of, uh, containers outside, garbage containers, and you can't pull in, 'cause you're blocking the driveway, which I see in a lot of places.
Well, the, the board certainly, uh, would have a better grasp on, uh, what would be the appropriate solution for the shul to eliminate one parking space and have a dumpster. Because, you know, I spent a long time, I've been out of Lakewood a while, so I haven't gone to shul to see, uh, how the dumpster versus can situation works. But I've seen both of them work. Uh, in this particular case, we felt it was a smaller shul that was not gonna be a minion fountain or anything of that nature. So we thought roll-out cans would work, but we would defer to the board's, uh, uh, decision on that.
Okay, and Brian.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
What about, uh, having the dumpster? And as we have here where I live, they put a nice white fence around it, and the front is a, is two doors. Hello?
Uh, well, I'm listening to you.
Well, we, we would comply with whatever the, the board is concerned with.
Okay, it could be done either way, and you're not, and you don't need a variance because you have...
We've already provided one of this more parking space.
Okay, what's with a simple? Yes.
Sign stable.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that, Brian, so. Okay, please proceed.
DPW, the review letter, uh, letter says that it's gonna be private sanitation.
Oh, boy, I never see that.
Yeah, I'm looking at the letter now.
Okay.
So I don't think, I don't think they do, uh, they do with regular cans. It's gonna have to be a dumpster.
Yeah, pri- private doesn't do cans. I never saw that.
Well, this, this would be the first shul in Lakewood that I've done where it's private sanitation. But, uh, a- a- again, if that's the case, uh, if DPW says for some reason they're not, uh, gonna provide service to this, uh, and, um, then, then we would need a dumpster, and we would eliminate a parking space to do that as part of resolution compliance.
Mr. Flannery, if you should put up a dumpster, can you show on the plan where you would put it? And can a truck go in head-on and back out? Is there room for it?
Well, if, if it's gonna be private pickup, then it, it could be scheduled at a time where we could have a roll-out container. Uh, ob- obviously, w- we would eliminate one of the parking spaces, and, uh, we'd work with, uh, the board engineer as part of resolution compliance to pick the space, uh, and accommodate the space. Uh, it would seem that one of the ones closer to the road, uh, would accommodate it best. But a- again, we wanna bo- balance aesthetics, and we would defer to the board and, and the board engineer's opinion as to where that would be. And, and obviously, as Dave indicates, would, it, it would be fenced, uh, with gates.
Brian, why would, uh, DPW not accept it?
I, they're writing, they're writing referring to the letter, uh, item number fourteen. I don't have the letter. The letter's not available online. But they're saying, as per the letter, item number fourteen, that this is gonna be private.
Where's this? Item fourteen from Terry's report?
Mr. Stables, I did just email, I just emailed the letter for your request and put it in the online folder. It must have been an oversight. Did you say item fourteen? Is there a different file?
I, I don't, I don't see that.
I don't either.
It's the same, but item fourteen from which letter?
Um, just reading what the DPW says. Per note number fourteen on the plan, that's what it says. Per note number fourteen on the plan.
It is...
Waste recycling to be collected by private.
Is this, uh, on this plan?
Yeah, it is.
Note fourteen on this plan said...
I think regardless, it should be a dumpster, so we have to plan accordingly.
Yeah.
They're not gonna, they're not gonna walk two, a hundred fifty feet, two hundred feet every time, back and forth. They're just gonna stay up front, wander around, and, and...
Excuse me, Chairman.
Stay that way.
One second. But this is nothing. This is, this is about the... Yeah, Terry, I'm sorry. Please.
I'm looking at the plan that I have that's revised to September 24th. Uh, and there's a note thirteen that says solid waste and recycling to be collected by Lakewood DPW curbside. So there seems to be a difference in information.
Okay, then...
If it's the determination of the board that we need a dumpster, as part of resolution compliance. Um, so the applicant is flexible either way. We've indicated our, our preference.
Yeah, will DPW pick it up?
Well, if, uh, if, if DPW doesn't pick it up and we're required to have a dumpster, then we'd have to have...
Okay, now, could, Brian, could you explain what Ally's having on the screen? Could hear it says that... If he goes, if he goes down a drop, it says that it's gonna be private.
I can say that typically when DPW's reviewing the plan, it's much earlier in the project. So there's a chance that it's prior to the plan review meeting. So there's a chance either that there was mistake or that the intention changed after that initial submission to DPW. Typically, what Terry requires during resolution compliance, things have changed, that they resubmit to DPW to get their input on the new plan.
And, and we would resubmit to DPW because it, it sounds like the majority of the board is saying we need a dumpster. We would submit what's dumpster location to DPW. I'm assuming DPW will pick it up. That's due to all the other ones, and, and we'll make a dumpster that, that can accommodate DPW pickup, or we'll have to have private pickup.
Okay.
The, the one other item I've... One other item I'd like to add to my testimony is, I, I know there was a question with respect to the uh, mikvah in the basement, and the ordinance requires additional parking if there's more than five changing rooms. There, there will not be, there, there will be less than five changing rooms. Uh, so no parking is needed for the, uh, mikvah in the basement.
Is there any simple hall dancers?
There is no simple hall. It, it's, uh...
You're, you're using it for mikvah?
Yes.
And the mikvah is most probably not, it's not for public, it's for the, the participants and the, the congregants coming to the shul.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and, uh, Brian, is that it?
That is it.
Okay. Do any board members have any questions from Mr. Flannery?
It was mentioned that the...
Oh, boy.
Go on, go on. Okay, it was mentioned that this is not a large, uh, you, you, the building's here. I'm just looking. It's about sixteen thousand square foot according to the drawing here.
Nineteen thousand.
Okay, sorry.
It's a one thousand nine hundred... It's a one thousand nine hundred ninety-one square foot sanctuary, which is what the ordinance categorizes, uh, shuls based on. Uh, and, and just to put it into perspective, in an eight-hundred-square-foot sanctuary, the ordinance says you don't need any parking at all. So this is roughly twice as big as what you need to not have any parking at all. So, uh, compared to, you know, some of the, the larger shuls, uh, it, it's, it's my opinion, it, it's on the smaller size. It's under two thousand. And the ordinance graduates them into, you know, under eight hundred, then under two thousand, then under three thousand, then over three thousand. So we're, we're in the second category of shuls.
Okay.
As you know, two times nothing is still nothing.
Dave, are you on speaker?
I'm here.
Is anybody speaking on speak? Okay, now it's better. Okay, thank you. Dave, you have anything else to say?
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. What we'll have to do... They, uh, can everyone just, we would ask that everyone, uh, put their computer on mute unless you're speaking, and if you hit the spacebar, that will unmute you. You can use that like a mic control. Um, but please, please put your, uh, your audio on mute, uh, unless, uh, you're recognized by the chair to speak. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dave, are you finished?
Yeah, I'm just looking. The entrances, is one, is two entrances? Or exits? Is one or slot one?
There's only one. One is the rabbi's, uh, entrance driveway.
Chairman, meanwhile, uh, the, uh, dumpster is gonna be sent, sent, correct? We're gonna put up a fence and some, uh...
Yes.
Okay.
I only see one driveway.
No, there's one driveway for the house.
Well, I'm looking...
The four spaces.
I can see one driveway here in the, and I'm looking at the...
One, one driveway for the synagogue, and then you have on the right, four spaces for the private residence. Is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So that will be a separate.
Is one driveway allowed?
Yes.
The driveways are in accordance with the ordinance.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions? Any board members have any other questions?
I had some questions, but I don't know. My, like, is my mic making everybody crazy?
Now you're okay.
Hey, while you're speaking.
Okay. Ellie, could you pick up the phone? Not on the speaker?
What'd you say? Now I'm talking through my computer audio. Can you not hear me?
Okay, now I hear you. There's an echo.
There's an echo. Okay, just really quickly, um, I saw in, in the comments that there is, um, there's some concern about some buffering from some neighbors. I also, I also saw there was, that, um, and I just, if you could talk to that buffering, whatever you're gonna do over there. Secondly, that, um, the rabbi said he's not going to be using the downstairs all or call whatever you want during weekdays, only on weekends. I just would like that to go into the resolution. And thirdly, I mean, my personal opinion as far as the trash pickup, if this place is not going to be used during the week, I don't see why it cannot be, uh, DPW that does the pickup. And unmute yourself.
Thank you.
With respect to buffering, uh, we, we have to, this is the Board of Education site, uh, and we're proposing a fence, uh, to the south of us, uh, and, and a, uh, there was an aerial that was submitted with the plan. To the south of us, there were some duplexes. And again, we would provide a six-foot fence. All of these neighbors have been, um, uh, noticed, uh, and, and certainly to the extent that they want something beyond what we've offered. The applicant is trying to be a good neighbor and, and, uh, provide a service to the neighborhood. Uh, and, and we would do whatever's requested by the neighbors. But it's my testimony that the fence along the property line and, and it indicates, uh, the fence on the plans, uh, would, uh, comply with the intent of the ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Brian, you testified there's no simple hall right here. I don't see anything. Cause Ellie said something about a simple hall.
There is a room in the basement, uh, but it's, uh.
Strictly for Shabbos.
Yes, yes. It's a shop, the same, the same as, because we're not providing, it's not intended to be a hall. We're not providing.
It's not, it's not, it's not open to the public. It's just like a, okay, thank you. Any other board members have any questions?
Through the chair.
Please, Mr. Stern.
You fail? So, I mean, Brian, the secondary room is 1,600 square feet, 40 by 40. Um, it's kind of a blank slate. Why don't you tell us a little bit more what the actual intentions are by the congregation for that, um, that 1,600 square foot space?
I, Miriam has spoken to the rabbi at length about that, and she could probably, uh, describe that better than I would.
I mean, the main sanctuary is 1,991 and the secondary room 1,600. So it's not that much smaller.
Okay, Ms. Weinstein?
The, what, which room are we talking about? The secondary room?
In the basement.
In the basement. That's, 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 yes, that is a kiddish hall. Every shul has, has the ability to have a kiddish on Shabbos that would be restricted from anyone who wasn't a member, and it would only be used on Shabbos. So it does not have an issue with parking.
You agree to put that into the resolution, correct?
You can put that into the resolution, yes. Yeah, Ellie made that request. That's fine.
By the way, do you hear me better now?
Yes.
I changed my microphone. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, when we get to the appropriate time, there were, there were comments submitted by neighbors and, uh, Ms. McLeer, uh, indicated to me that, uh, many of the comments indicated that the, the rabbi had promised them at the hall. I assume that means this kiddish room.
Right.
And just correct me if I'm on the right page, um, that, uh, that would not be used on, uh, on weekend.
Only on the weekend.
Weekdays and not on weekends.
Be used on the weekend, correct?
Right.
That's correct.
So I guess this question for Terry and John, what gives me comfort looking at this plan is there's no kitchen, there's no plumbing, there's no sink, there's no gas. Is it pretty clear that after we would approve this, we can't come, the applicant couldn't come back later and decide to put in a kitchen without, without coming back to us? Is that correct?
That would have to be a condition of the approval. Um, I don't think per se that stops you from putting a kitchen in unless it can be approved because you don't want it to, to lend itself to some other use. So, so that would have to be a specific condition.
So Ms. Weinstein, are you comfortable agreeing that if a real life in the basement, that the applicant would have to come back to the board and seek our approval?
There wouldn't be a kitchen, but they'd possibly be, they'd want to use it to warm, they'd need to warm food up on Shabbos. So they'd need some type of a warmer or something in there. I just wouldn't want to restrict them from not being able to have a warmer that would allow them to warm up food on Shabbos.
You can put a hot plate anywhere. There's no kitchen in this plan. That gives me.
I understand that. I understand that. And the intent is not to put a kitchen. The intent is 100% is, is not to use this room for anything other than to be used on Shabbos. But definitely we need to have, be able to put a hot plate and to warm things up.
A warmer's not a problem.
Does not constitute a kitchen, Ms. Weinstein, in my opinion.
I, 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 I hear you. I just want to make it clear that there should be no language that would restrict them from having a hot plate or a warmer to warm things up on the Shabbos.
I would agree with that 100%.
And, and the one thing, I don't think the secondary room, the basement, has any access to, uh, there's some outside stairs. It's coming through the building. Is that correct?
Well, go stair A.
Staircase number eight does.
A probably does.
A comes through. Okay.
And the other one, the other one as well.
Okay. So Ms. Weinstein, you definitely agree that it will only be used for, on Shabbos?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman.
You're not letting, no outside people can rent the hall, and you're not making a full-fledged kitchen in there. Only warmers.
And to be clear, that if they want to put one in, they would have to come back to us.
Right. Okay.
Yeah. I have a question.
Yeah, Dave.
Chairman.
Yeah, Dave.
It is, is what we're talking about is in the lower level?
In the basement, yes.
Yeah. Now, I remember, uh, involved in something like this. Does the basement in the area you're gonna be in have windows large enough that somebody can get out if necessary?
This is.
There's staircases. There's staircases.
That's where you can get a problem of people.
Right.
Someone trying to get out at once.
But Dave, that's a fire code, a building code.
Yeah.
And if they don't have means of egress, uh, they will not get approved to use it as anything. So make the secondary room, they have to have, whatever the fire code says, they're gonna have to comply in order to get approved.
Okay.
And that's a building issue. And it's well.
Yeah, I'd rather be safe than sorry.
100%, 100%. Uh, okay. I would open up to the public right now.
One more thing now that my, working with added parents, I guess.
Mr. Renner, Ellie, I'm sorry.
Just to go back to, to the buffering on the side that I asked about before, and I, just because I saw it in some of the comments, whatever buffering people requested, is that from the side that you are putting the fence on? And is that taking care of their, of their concern? Are there other concerns? I just want to understand what the concerns were and how it's.
The, the only buffering concern we could have from residents on the, uh, sturdly side, because the northerly side is, is the Lakewood Board of Education property would.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Chairman?
Yes.
As we go to public comment, I recommendation, I make a recommendation that you, as chair with the authority to come into this meeting, um, ask that any comments that are opposed to this application, uh, be voiced first. Um, and, and then after that, there were, there were a series of comments that were positive. Um, they're, they're part of the board's file. Um, I will, uh, ask Ms. McLeer to summarize them. Uh, but let, let's, before we make that decision to simply summarize the positive comments, let's just ask if there are any, uh, person, position or want conditions that they want the board to consider.
Okay.
That would make the recommendation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Chairman, it's time table. Can I have a question quick?
Yeah, sure.
Uh, again, the question is to Brian. I want to go back to the dumpster for one second. Uh, if you want to do a fenced in dumpster, usually how, how tall is the fence? Is it a six-foot fence?
Six-foot fence.
And if you're gonna have these, uh, grass by the chain link, those inserts, those, I'm not sure how to read.
Yeah, we, we, we could either do the inserts in the chain link or, or do a vinyl fence, whatever the board prefers.
Okay, so we have to figure this out.
Okay.
Chairman, which one do you like?
I like vinyl. I like to protect it. I, I don't want to see a chain link, see all the garbage all over.
Very good. Okay, so we're gonna put a six-foot vinyl.
That's up to whoever makes the motion. Okay, Ellie, now up to you. Do we have any opposition to this plan? Any emails with opposition?
I did not, I did not receive any emails opposition. As Mr. Jackson said, I received a number, um, a, a number in favor of it. We do have a few callers on here that we should open up to if anyone is here on this application.
Okay.
Callers that are unlabeled.
Uh, how do we check?
And do any of the call-in, do any of the people come in occasionally?
Any call-in people have any opposition to this? Are they muted?
Yes.
Okay. I see that somebody's shimming Greenbaum, he's muted.
All right, it appears that there is no one who has opposed this. Uh, you know, you can, you can still send, send a message, um, but.
Somebody's shimming Greenbaum is muted.
I unmuted him and there you go, Mr. Greenbaum. Do you have any comments on this application?
Mr. Chairman, this is Adam. Sherman Greenbaum, my application.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I think, uh, members have, members of the public have the ability to hit their spacebar to unmute or move your cursor, your microphone. If anyone has any opposition to this application, or if anyone has any conditions, uh, that the board has not discussed that they would like to see added, uh, please, uh, unmute your microphone and speak now. You're, you're, and you will be recognized by the chair.
Okay, I will give to, I'm gonna wait a minute.
Since there are none, uh, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I would ask that.
Jillian, could you summarize what you see on the, on the emails that we got?
Uh, yes, of course, Mr. Chairman. Um, so, um, as Mr. Jackson and Ms. Morris indicated, we have received and reviewed approximately 36 email, uh, comments from the public. The comments that we've seen are all in support of the application, and they generally speak to the belief that the proposed shul will enhance the neighborhood, will be beneficial to the families in the neighborhood, and fulfill an essential need of the neighborhood. Um, as was mentioned already, several of the comments reference, uh, a meeting with the rabbi, which ensured neighbors that the proposed hall won't be used during weekdays, uh, only on Shabbos, and that the applicant will accommodate any privacy issues raised by adjacent homeowners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, all those emails are for the public to see. They're part of the record. Is that correct?
Yes, they are. They're, they're, I put them in that folder that's linked on the attach of website with the plans and the review letter. They are there.
Okay, thank you. So I would close it to the public, and I would ask for motion on this application. Everybody, anybody muted? Anybody making motion?
I'll move it.
Okay, Mr. Renner, was that you?
It was not. If you want to make it me, you could.
Okay. Now, who's the woman?
I think I did, and or if Mr. Renner wants to make it, I'll second it.
Okay.
I'm just gonna, uh, be certain that in the resolution, it's gonna state, as we spoke earlier, that it's not going to be used, uh, the, the kiddish room is only gonna be used on weekends, not during the week. Um, and then, as you mentioned, there's gonna be that buffering to the neighbors, um, which is gonna be part of the plan. Um, as far as the garbage, my, my personal opinion, if you want to call everybody, you could. My personal opinion is that because it's not gonna be a commercial use this place over here, I'm okay if DPW reviews it and says that they're okay, um, picking up the trash, but I'll go along with the majority of the board.
Okay.
I have enough evidence.
Okay. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Is that motion?
Is that what?
You second that motion, what Mr. Renner said?
Uh, yes. Just to clarify that there's, there's no kitchen being built without us getting explicit approval.
Okay.
That is right.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield. Uh, hold on. I'm sorry. Mr. Garfield, go ahead.
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stern?
Yes.
Mr. Sable.
I lost connection for a minute. Can you quickly repeat the motion?
The motion was
Mr. Renner?
To, yeah, the motion was to approve it as, as presented, um, just in the resolution. I'd like you to mention that it's not, that the kiddish facility is only gonna be used during the weekend, only on weekends, only on Saturday, to be clear. Um, that there's, if there's gonna be a kitchen put in, um, it has to come back to the planning board. And as far as I'm concerned, as far as the trash pickup, the DPW is okay picking up the trash here. I'm okay with them picking up the trash here.
Okay, and.
Did you mention about a dumpster?
Yeah.
We'll leave it up to DPW.
Is that, is that a dumpster is not necessary because it's not gonna be used in a commercial way? That's the motion that I made.
Okay, the only thing is even Shabbos, if they have a kiddish, their Shabbos, you can have a lot of garbage.
And the gas is gonna stay all over.
Okay. I, I, I'm okay with it leaving it up to DPW, whatever they feel is best.
If, if there has to be a dumpster, then it should be enclosed in a six-foot high vinyl fence.
Okay. Okay, so we'll hold my roll call. Mr. Sable, we'll hold it by you now.
Okay.
Yes?
I'll, I'll go along with it.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Your plans found?
Yes.
Mr. Hertzler?
Yes.
And Mr. Renner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion approved, number two. More longer agenda today.
This discussion on today's agenda is SC 2085 for congregation Mayor Heta Fila. It's a site plan for addition to existing synagogue at 145 Lintlaw.
Terry, can you please go through the report?
Yes, Chairman. Um, I'm reading for my October 12 review. And beginning towards the bottom of page two, under submission waivers, they include traffic study, proof of submission, Doshen County planning, topo contours, and man-made features within two or feet, EIS, and soil erosion plan. Um, we recommend the waivers for hearing purposes for reasons stated in the letter.
Okay. Do we have a motion to go along with the engineer's recommendations? No move, it's just, just.
Second to Ellie.
Ellie, second. All in favor? All right. Okay, Terry, please proceed.
Thank you. Uh, continuing on page three of our review under section two zoning, comment number two, uh, variance relief includes minimum front yard setback, minimum rear yard setback, uh, maximum building coverage, um, and, uh, apparently number of parking spaces, uh, is, and, uh, also, uh, variance relief appears necessary, uh, for perimeter buffer. Uh, and then finally, um, a design waiver, uh, appears to be necessary, at least a partial waiver for fencing.
Okay, thank you. Basically, every variance. Okay, who's here on this application? Uh, it's Adam, it's you who muted. Uh, it's Adam, it's you who muted.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Adam Pfeffer, on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I, while I understand the, the chairman indicates that there's every variance being sought here, uh, this is a very unique situation, uh, and, and I will put the elephant in the room, you know, right in the front. Uh, yes, we have no parking. Um, you have to understand this area to, to understand the application. This is an existing synagogue that's been around for many years. Uh, the synagogue is located at England Village, I'm sure everyone's familiar with the area. This is not an area that, that's, that's ripe for development. Um, it's already been developed. There, there are no open, uh, parcels that I'm aware of, uh, that can be built up. These are all R twelve, R fifteen thousand, R fifteen, so twelve or fifteen thousand square foot lots, uh, with existing homes on them. Uh, this congregation is actually, is getting a little bit older. The, many of the, the members, um, purchased these homes and moved to this area approximately ten to fifteen years ago. Uh, the, the request, uh, this evening for this extension, um, to expand the, the existing synagogue is really for their own children. Uh, their children are now getting older, the teenagers are coming to the synagogue, uh, and they're trying to accommodate their own community. Um, you will hear later on, um, uh, I don't know if we'll have any objectors, but as a quick, uh, quick review of the letters that have come in, I believe there are approximately sixty-some, uh, emails in support of this congregation. Now, if you just look at the map, actually, it's right in front of us, if you just start counting, you know, counting the lots there, I mean, sixty-some, some emails, even if only half of them, even if they're double for a husband and a wife, which I'm not saying they are, um, you have almost all the surrounding, uh, lots, all in favor, all in support of this. Uh, we do have Glenn Lines, who's gonna address the, the technical, uh, questions in nature. We do have the architect who's available to ask, to address any, any, uh, architectural questions. And we have a representative of the, of the, of the synagogue here to address also to, to confirm what I'm saying in that this is not for new people coming to the area. There are no other houses, uh, in the area. Um, if someone sells a house, it's being replaced with a new owner. It's not gonna be a new family, um, or an, I'm sorry, an additional family. If I count at this time, if we can swear, Glenn Lines?
Mr. Lines, uh, I don't see you, but I assume you're there on the, since the screen's being taken up by the map. But do you confirm testimony before this word with the truth, the whole truth and nothing but?
Glenn, you're, you're muted.
You have to unmute yourself. Could you just, uh?
I do.
Okay, thank you. And you're offered as an expert in engineering and planning?
Yes, we'll accept it.
Okay.
Yeah, Glenn, please go.
And, uh, Glenn, before you go, just as you're walking through, if you can just, when, any exhibits you pull up, if you can just mark them, we'll start with A one and go from there.
Okay, okay. Okay, so you had already discussed, uh, the top stuff, which would be, which would be, uh, A one. We're gonna, we send in is A two, is a copy of the, uh, site plan. A three is the site plan overlaid on the Google satellite. Those are three, uh, uh, three exhibits for it. Uh, we go back to A two, Alan. Thank you. Um, the, going through the variances first. Number two is the front yard setback variance. Uh, we are requesting that on the Powderhorn, the property's on a, quickly describe the property, it is, uh, it's on the corner of Powderhorn Drive and Flintlock Drive. Uh, the existing, uh, building is shown on, in the center of the site, and we're proposing in addition on the rear or northeast side of the property. We were, we are proposing on the plan, one handicap parking space, uh, which I'll discuss a little later. And as far as, uh, so with the addition, uh, as far as variances are required, I'll go in the audit, they are in the letter. Uh, number two is for a front yard setback on the Powderhorn side. Uh, we have a exterior staircase, uh, which is required for emergency access from, you know, the second, the second floor, you know, the mezzanine level, uh, which, uh, we, the only place really to put it with the layout of the interior and the building is on that side of the building. So we're thirty feet required. Uh, the stairs are gonna be twenty-three point, uh, two-nine feet. In my opinion, it's an open stairway. Uh, it doesn't block any site triangles. It's really not, um, not going to impose on anybody's, uh, you know, on the corner. So I believe that's a, a good location to put it, and I, I don't believe it's a detriment to, uh, that variance or the staircase.
And Glenn, this is Adam, just to, to confirm, because it's a corner lot, um, theoretically, it's really our side yard for our property as we front on Flintlock, is that correct?
Yes, we front on Flintlock.
So, so the side yard, what, what will be the side yard requirement, um, in the zone?
The side yard in this zone is, uh, ten, one side, total of twenty-five. So that, you know, we already have ten on the, uh, on, on the right side of the building. So on this, uh, on the left side, which is the Powderhorn side, you know, we have twenty-three point two-nine, which is in excess of fifteen. So if it were an interior lot, there wouldn't be a variance in this there.
Thank you.
The second is a rear yard setback, uh, for the addition. Again, we're, we're just slightly over what the side yard, if this were, if, if the corner lot had two sides, we're at nine point nine eight feet. There's really no activity on this side of the building, you know, a normal house. Uh, you know, your rear yard, there's a lot of activity, you know, you can have children playing, that type of thing. Uh, this is really just an emergency exit, um, which would rarely be used. And I believe we have, uh, a storage area for, uh, our, our trash cans. The neighboring lot, which, uh, lot two, which is just to the northeast, um, this is the garage side of their house, and there's a, a two-car, uh, driveway. If we could go to A three for a second, Alan?
Ali, could you go to A three?
A three, the satellite view? Okay, so, um, right behind the shul, you can see there's, there's a house, uh, with a garage on the, on the side, and then there's a driveway on that side of the house. So, um, it's, I don't, I don't believe the, the shul would, uh, will really impose that much on that neighbor. Uh, it's not like that's, you know, they don't have a pool there, they don't have any, uh, other activity, you know, to park cars on that side. So because that side of the building is, is a quiet side, and the neighbor, you know, has the driveway here, I don't believe this will, uh, negatively impact their property. Uh, building coverage, uh, is what it is. We have a, we're, we have twenty-five percent permitted, and, uh, we're at forty percent. We're, we're trying to expand the building, uh, to meet the needs of the neighborhood and the congregants. And, uh, any, any, honestly, any smaller of an addition wouldn't meet their needs. Uh, so we're, we're requesting that, you know, basically out of, out of need. The last one, which, uh, uh, I had to mention originally, is the parking variance. Um, currently, there is no parking on site. Everybody, you know, I would say ninety percent, ninety-five percent of people walk. There are a few people who park, uh, as you see on the, uh, on the satellite view, right down at the bottom of, uh, of the, of the satellite view on the front. I believe, I, I can't tell if it's two or three cars, because it's writing on top of it. You know, there's three cars on our side of the street, and, you know, two cars on the other side of the street. Um, so, you know, not knowing exactly when the picture was taken, but, you know, right now, there are not, you know, the street isn't full of parks. We, uh, so, and we really have room for-
How many, how many on, on-street parking could you have in front of the whole building? You have, could you park on Powderhorn also?
There's, there's probably, uh, five on each side, probably, you know, against our building. There's, uh, it's, it's two hundred and twenty, a hundred and twenty-five feet by a hundred and ten. So if you fit easily ten cars in front of the shul, you know, five on Powderhorn, five on Flintlock. Um, and then, you know, so people park on both sides of the street. You know, we're talking about, uh, you know, twenty cars for, for the shul, where, again, most of the people, you know, they walk now. So, you know, there, there's no real need for them, you know, they're not gonna change their ways, but they're getting to the shul. So, um, we believe the parking variance is justified. Uh, we don't, again, we don't have parking now. We're just meeting the needs with the teenagers and that type of thing of the shul. Uh, so there's really no, no thought that parking is gonna all of a sudden become an issue.
Ali, is there any opposition? Did you see any opposition to this application from any neighbors? Okay.
No, it all seemed to be in favor.
So the all the neighbors live within a, a block or two, on walking distance. I'm, I'm looking on the aerial map. You can bring that up again. There's not too many, there's not too many streets you have in the, the New England Village. You have, Powderhorn is a long street, you have, uh, you have Flintlock over there in that area. You have Cannibal.
Right, and, and again, like where New England Court is, you know, some of these streets don't, don't actually have houses, they're, they're paper streets at the end. But it's, it's really a limited neighborhood. You get to the inside of Sunset, there's a, there's a, a major shul over there that takes care of the, uh, the-
Yeah, Sunset, that, that's a big shul to have, okay.
So there are some people in, probably in New England Village who go there. Uh, there's a, there's a subdivision behind that. There's another little shul over on, um, James Street. I think one or two lots in from the corner. So there are, there are a few other parts in the area. So it's not like this is the only one, but really, most of the people within reasonable walking distance of the shul, so they-
Ali, let me ask you, is, do you have the addresses of all the people sending the emails? You're muted, Ali.
I'm, I'm sure it's on the emails themselves. I do not have, uh, an individualized list.
Right. Now, I would like it to be part of the record, if we do approve it, showing you the reason why we approved it, because everybody lives within, uh, you know, a block or two or three, and they're all walking, they wouldn't pay to take a car.
Right.
Excuse me, Chairman.
Yeah, uh, Terry.
Yeah, I just want to put it on the record. Uh, does the applicant agree to the technical recommendations in our October twelfth letter?
Um, oh, the review comments? Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we didn't have any problem with those. Uh, one or two, we need some clarification on, but that's just part of the resolution, which we want. Um, the last one, I, there is, we didn't, I didn't finish, there was one more variance, and that's for the twenty-foot wide perimeter buffer. Uh, there's an existing fence, we'll just be, uh, extending that, um, a little bit to propose, uh, the, both sides of the shul, uh, you know, with fencing rather than, um, rather than a landscape park.
Okay, the Chair?
Yeah.
Um, I, I just wanted to mention that you brought up about the neighborhood. Um, I am familiar with this, um, shul, I passed it off, and it is the neighborhood shul. It's used, um, and everybody walks there, as you can see, it's a developed neighborhood. Um, and I, you just asked about the comments. I, I did scroll through the comments, and I did see that the person that they're extending, you know, is close, close to his property, he did send in a comment in support of the application.
Okay, thank you. The, the only thing what I would, uh, M- Mr. Lines, do you have any handicap parking?
Well, we, we have one handicap space proposed. Um, it's kind of awkward in the middle of the site, and it, it eliminates it, and actually, an on-street parking space.
Yeah, listen, e- even if people walk, there's always, you know, you have one or two elderly people who cannot walk. So we have to take into consideration for that. I know you're making a ramp over there. Uh, I, I think you definitely need at least one or two parking spaces for, you know, elderly or old firm.
Okay, well, what I, what I actually would like to recommend, rather than chunk out the, the whole, uh, piece in the property for handicap spaces, uh, stripe a handicap space on the street and provide, you know, the necessary ramps and access from the space in, on the street. We could put it on the Powderhorn side, you know, right, right near that sidewalk, and, um, it would keep the front of the shul, uh, actually visually nicer than having a-
Terry, is, is that work on a public road to stripe some street, uh, some parking spaces handic- And I see that, I see that-
We need township approval to do so. Uh, I would recommend input at a minimum from the traffic and safety section.
Yeah, okay. No, because I know in every, every department store you go, you go to shop, everybody has handicap parking spaces. I know I have in my store, but that's a private parking lot. I don't know in the street if we can restrict it.
Yeah, I'm not sure, truthfully, if you can create ADA, ADA compliant with the street parking, because you have to comply with the ramp coming out of the space. Um, we have to, to look at that carefully. Uh, I'm not sure that that would be fully ADA compliant.
Okay.
Can we put the parking on Powderhorn, right on, off-street, on Powderhorn, not on Flintlock?
What do you, what do you mean?
Yeah, we could, we, we could shift the, the handicap space over to the Powderhorn side.
Glenn, where, where is your main entrance?
On, on Flintlock.
At the corner. It's at the corner of the building, um-
Uh, because you have a handicap person, you need, he has to have direct access to go in. You can't have him going around the whole building.
The whole building, the whole building, the whole building. No, I mean, if we moved it to the side, it would be where the wording, where it says, propose stairs to the second, to the second floor, to be in that area. To be in that area. Which is even closer to the entrance, and it's not gonna take away from the view and from the image of the building.
I, I would suggest that, that they try to possibly get permission from the town to paint on, on the street, for, for the handicap, and if they cannot get it, then they should have it either where they're proposing it here or on the Powderhorn side. Whatever works best.
And we, and we should have the ramp going up to-
Going up to-
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I make a suggestion? This is Adam Pfeffer.
Yes, please.
The applicant will agree to do both. How about, we'll, we'll write to the township requesting that we can get one additional ADA spot, either on Flintlock or Powderhorn, uh, as well as we're gonna provide, um, on the opposite ones. We don't lose two spots on one street. We'll either do the Flintlock, um, ADA spots, um, on our site or on the Powderhorn site. Glenn, do you, do you think that, that would work?
That would be fine. That would be fine.
This way, we could try, at, at a minimum, we'll have our one, but if, in addition, we will also agree to write to the township committee requesting that they stripe an area, um, to give us a second ADA spot.
Okay. The only problem with that is-
It takes away from, uh, parking on Powderhorn at all.
Well, we actually, we're gonna move this space- We're gonna move this space- over to the, the handicap space to the Powderhorn side of the building, then you pick up the one space that we're losing on the Flintlock side. It's a wash, you know?
Correct.
Okay, now, is there any hall in the basement?
There's no basement in the building. The building.
Okay.
Correct. There's no basement.
And you're gonna have sidewalks.
Sidewalks.
I believe they're existing. Glenn, can you confirm?
Uh, there's, there's, I will, I will- Accessing the addition, and there are existing sidewalks in the front and, uh, part of the side of the building. It, or that.
Where's the trash?
Right. Next question.
Uh, trash would be in the back of the, on the backside of the building, near the, where the addition is. Uh, it, it's called out, it's just the, uh, the words for it are up above the top of the screen. Okay, there it is, proposed four-by-twenty storage, trash storage area, right along the back.
And it'll be picked up by, by DPW?
DPW.
It'll be a, a dumpster- It'll be a, a dumpster over there?
No, it'll be rollout cans.
Okay.
We have no, but there, but it, there, there's no, no simple hall. There's no Kedish room. There's nothing. I mean, it's, there's really no, like the last application, yes, there's a room. You think, I think you're right. You're concerned about the volume of garbage. I just really don't think this is going to create that much garbage.
Yeah, Glenn, is this septic or city sewer?
City sewer.
Dolphins?
Yes. It's old neighborhood.
Okay.
Through the chair?
Yes, Mr. Stern.
So are there any interior plans of what we're planning to put into this new addition?
I believe there are. And I, again, said the architect may be available to discuss it.
So basically just more.
Yes, yes.
Correct. And, and again, Mr. Chairman, not that if we, if we don't need it, we don't need it, but the architect is on the, on the, the meeting and they're available to testify. Any questions the board may have?
Just throw all the way down, Ally, or whoever's controlling that.
Ally, you can have. You can have double minutes.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Hold on just a minute. For whatever reason, Adam is the one we're getting the feedback, feedback, feedback loop on. That's why I keep muting you, Adam. So unless you're talking, if someone else is talking, it's doubling back on Adam. So.
Okay, thank you.
I'm not going to keep muting you, but just unmute as soon as you're actually going to speak.
Okay. And if Adam is speaking, nobody else should speak. Everybody should be muted and I don't think it'll bubble talk.
It's doing what any, what Ellie's was doing before, but Ellie's is better now, so.
By the way, Adam, my issue was, you want to maybe check on your computer? My issue was that the speaker and the mic were from two different speakers and mics. It wasn't using the same speaker and mic. So I have a couple of different options. Look at your options.
I think we need an engineer for that.
Bruce, were you looking for a particular sheet on here or did you?
No, no, I'm good. I just, it's more seats in, in the main sanctuary, which makes sense.
Right.
Okay, any other questions for any board members? Okay, seeing none, I would open it to the public. And Ally or Jillian?
Yeah, I, I don't have any negative emails. I believe all of the emails we received were in the affirmative and I think John or Gillian have the summary ready for that.
Yes, what I would recommend, I don't know why I'm getting the echo. What I would recommend is that you once again ask whether there are any member, any members of the public observing or watching and wish to participate and, and give an objection or a request for a condition that the board has not indicated that they're going to impose, that they, they speak up so that the board can consider that. And then if there are none, then, then I think we can
Okay.
address, then I think we can.
And is anybody in the public who would like to make any comments opposing this application or any conditions? Please speak up. Oh, wait a minute. Okay. Seeing none, I would ask Gillian to make a summary of what, all the emails you got and just make sure that it's on the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me, okay, so we, we have received and reviewed approximately sixty-two emailed comments from the public. All emailed comments expressed agreement with the relief requested in the application and expressed support of the expansion of the shul. These, you know, the members of the public do believe that the expansion will, will not negatively affect the surrounding neighborhood is the, our review of the comments that we've received.
Okay, thank you very much. I would close it to the public right now and I would ask for a motion on this application.
I would make a motion. Sorry.
Go ahead, Ally. Go ahead.
I make a motion to approve it as presented. And with the option, with the, if, if they could get another handicap spot, they should. If not, it's also fine.
And I'll second that.
Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Garfield.
Yes.
Mr. Stern.
Yes.
Mr. Sabal.
Yeah.
Mr. Clansbrough.
Yes.
Mr. Hertzell.
Yes.
Mr. Brenner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Justin, did you get my yes?
Did you get my yes?
Thank you. It's fine. We're okay with that.
We got it twice, Justin.
I did get it.
Okay, approval of minutes? We have approval? Somebody moved it?
Moved.
Moved. We have a second? Second, all in favor? Aye. Approval of bills?
So moved, Justin.
Moved. Second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, thank, thank you, everybody. Have a great night. Everybody stay well.
Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you.
Don't forget to vote.
Right.
Amen. To everyone.
Good night, everyone.
It's lunch.
Ally, when's our next meeting?
Our next meeting is November tenth.